Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Move.
Move by Mr. Lawrence. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions? Seven oh. Call for a question, all in favor? Seven oh. Motion carry.
To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5K, resolution amending the budget for settlement monies received from USAA Insurance Company to repairs to the Biloxi Fire Department.
Need a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions? All in favor? Seven zero. Motion carry. Mayor's report.
Council President and Council, the mayor is out of town today, he's in DC. Actually, he's meeting, as we speak, with Senator Hyde Smith's office. I've just got a couple of things to do during mayor's reports. I have a proclamation I'd like to read. We have some seniority wards and I have one announcement. If I could go ahead?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to call up Ms. Katie Hancock, representing Advocates for Freedom. And her friend who didn't tell me her name. Okay. Let me read this proclamation. Whereas, a human trafficking victim is defined as anyone living in modern slavery by being trafficked into labor or the sex industry. And whereas, since more than 400,000 Americans are at risk for trafficking into the sex industry and some 17,500 foreign nationals are being trafficked into the United States each year, and the number of US citizens being trafficked within the country is even higher, it must be a top priority for our community. And whereas, through the month of January, communities throughout the United States and other participating countries are helping raise awareness of the critical need to stop human trafficking. And whereas, on behalf of the people of the city of Biloxi, I applaud all efforts to create awareness and to help stop human trafficking in Mississippi. Now therefore, Andrew Fofo Gilich, Mayor of Biloxi, City of Biloxi, does hereby proclaim the month of January 2019 as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And Katie is going to say some words.
I'm here representing Advocates for Freedom. I do serve on the executive board. I'm also a vice president for the Citizens Bank here in Biloxi. Beth is joining me. She is one of our volunteers for Advocates for Freedom. And on behalf of the board and the executive director, Suzy Harville, I'd like to thank Mayor Gilich, the chief of staff and the council members, for your wisdom and determination to help in the fight against modern day slavery. Over the past nine years, we have helped a total of 192 victims. AFF is actively training at the police academies each and every year. And we have a strong curriculum for middle and high school students to teach our children how to be safe. Human trafficking affects men, women, and children. It touches all races and all ages. This proclamation is good for tourism as it shows the public that you are serious about having a safe city for everyone. We humbly thank you each, and Chief Miller, for working with us. And we look forward to working with you in the year to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Now, we're going to do some longevity awards. I think I recall from the mayor's State of the City, he said we had 647 employees, of which over 100 are eligible for retirement. It's an amazing number when you think about it. Now, I'm going to call these guys up and ladies up, one by one. And just hold your applause till we get all done, and we'll take a picture, and then we'll give them applause. And, Kay, let's see. I guess you're going to do the Vanna White thing? Okay. All right. Let's start with Debbie Cuevas. Accountant, one, Administration Department, five years. Howard Griffith, laborer, Public Works, five years. Alicia Kimble, utility billing clerk, five years. No luck. She's out there doing some billing. That's good. Frank Lassar, laborer, five years. He's out there laboring. Charles McLennock, laborer, five years. Paul Thompson, laborer, five years. He's out laboring. Melvin Batea, center supervisor, Parks and Recs, 10 years. It's actually comforting to know this many people are out working. And Adam Kozlowski, building maintenance supervisor, 35 years. Did I miss anybody? Am I good? Thank you, Vanna. All right, picture. Congratulations. Last thing I had, just as an announcement, is we will be closing on February the 8th on our 2019 general obligation bond. That's the actual closing date.
Repeat that date?
February the 8th. The money, the money, my, you're, I can't say this for certain, but I would think the money would be in our accounts within a week. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Okay, we're going to move on to departmental reports. Oscarinda to give us a little update.
Good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Matranga, project manager for Oscarinda. So, we'll start on the east end of the project. Over on Oak Street, we have, when we put the surface course of asphalt down, we put a leveling course, then we put the surface course. We have the leveling course down on Oak Street. The weather has prevented us from installing the remainder of the surface. Has to be like 45 degrees and rising, so that's been the delay there. You can put binder down if it's 40 degrees. So, we have moved to other streets such as the little section of Percy to the east of Cavett and Anglada, parts of Anglada. We've done some base and then some little driveways in here and there by the old churches, chicken, that place, those kind of things we've done. So anyways, we anticipate tomorrow being able to finish the surface course of asphalt on Oak Street and Sixth Street. And we are, we did walkthroughs on Crawford, all of Crawford. We had a couple of things to fix. We should be moving there next with surface course of asphalt. And so, we're just, if you were to drive that part of the project, we're just kind of methodically pulling our way out of there. The next streets would be, we did a walkthrough on Penny, Sam, Strangie, North Division. And we anticipate surface course of asphalt going down there by the end of February, as well as Fountain and Brown. And then, hopefully by the end of March, we have Division Street, surface course of asphalt from Oak to Lee, and then also Holly. And those streets right there will close up. The area that we're closing up now is called SXSN. This will close up DIV 1 and 2. So, we have a team working equally as hard pushing us out the back end of the project as we do laying the pipe. So, that's going on. We are finished installing the sewer on Esters. We, that, we were supposed to move directly behind that with the storm drain. CSX has pulled off of the project. It was supposed to be for 10 days. Now, they don't know when they're coming back. They're like anyone else, like AT&amp;T, whatever. They kind of just do whatever they want and can do whatever they want. And so, we have no idea right now when they're coming back. It's halting us being able to finish that last little bit of storm drain. Not a little bit, but that last utility right there on Esters. And it's also preventing us, which I'll get into later, it's affecting the work on Benaki because that's in the CSX right away as well. So, we are installing, I think today will be the last day we're installing storm drain on Spanner. That will, that's the last utility on that street. Then, I'm, sorry, I'm methodically kind of going through the project in my head. I didn't write down any notes. We are doing landscaping on Delany right now. We've been really just working right behind, when the streets get the base course of asphalt, then we're there with the sidewalks, driveways, landscaping to where we're out of there. Fencing is the one thing that's lagging a little behind, but next week, we have the, we're doing a big, big ride around with the city on what fences are being removed, replaced, whatever, and we'll have another crew catching up with the fencing. We are on Main Street. We have finished, completed the sewer and the drainage north of Division. In fact, we're moving tomorrow, I think, a road crew over there to start putting down the road base and getting it ready for pavement. And we started yesterday tearing into the temporary asphalt south of Division. And we'll start with the sewer. And our plan is that the one crew will be there with the sewer like a couple of days and then someone just right behind them with the storm drain to where we don't leave that road open for very long. Cruces, I think we have, we're going to be finishing up installing some, I think we're installing some road base over there where we can pave part of the street, but the other part of the street is in GRN 1 and 2 where we'll be, still have some drainage and whatnot to do. Then, we are, we, like I said, we installed pavement on Percy, parts of Anglada that don't require any additional drainage. But we're getting into the, that particular area where we had, they had in, the plans have changed numerous times and where they doubled the amount of structures and added a whole lot of pipe. So, we're getting into that area right now to try and close all of that up. Then, on Bone Street, we have, yesterday, we completed the last sewer service on Bone. So, now that crew is moving into the GRN 1 and 2 area. And then, after Porter, we'll go over to Bone and start paving Bone. And we, I don't know if, I don't think this happened the last time I was here, but we paved, Graham Street got paved, and then Benaki, we're just, we're waiting on CSX to come back so that we can, we have a water and a sewer tie-in right there in the CSX right away. And then, we still have storm drain to lay on Benaki. Then, on Porter, we have completed all the utilities on Porter. I believe today will be our last day there finishing up. We have like three structures that we needed to pour the tops on, and we have a road crew going to move on to Porter to start installing road base on Porter and get the asphalt down on Porter. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, the, the plan is to have the curb machine over there, run the curb, and by the end of the month, February, to have pavement down on Porter. And, and we paved Queerance. I don't think, I don't, I think the last time, that was a major undertaking, and so we were really happy to pave Queerance. And just, you know, we have the sidewalk crew should be on Queerance today. They finished up on Bradford, the sidewalks on Bradford. And so, we'll be hopping over to Bradford to do landscaping, et cetera. But we'll be starting sidewalks and driveways on Queerance this week. And I'm sure I forgot something, but I think that's about it.
Okay. Any questions, George?
What's the plan for Forest Avenue?
Well, once we, once we finish Main Street, that Main Street crew's hopping over to Forest, so.
Forest with the gate from Keystone, I think, is going to be, got to cut down a lot of traffic, you know? We're going to have to go to the White Avenue or the Pass Road.
Yep. Yeah, it'll be, we'll probably be getting started on Forest at the end of February.
You're going to have a lot of crews there because, you know, with the gates and everything, that's a big deal to keep it, get it done fast as we can and get the gates back open. I know we've done everything else, pretty much. And one other thing, on Circle Park, on the east side, right in front of Ladies House, it's never been paved. Is there any reason that was left open like that?
Yes, sir. It has to do with tying in the water on Forest. So, once we complete that, then we'll be able to finish that little section up and pave it.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other council members? Okay, I have a couple. Elsis Boulevard, and I'm talking between Holly Street and Main Street.
Okay.
And I know you got Spanner Lane somewhere in between that. When you finish up Spanner Lane, is it almost time for the base to go down through that whole stretch?
That's the area where we, we still have, we still have the drainage to lay.
Got it.
That's in the CSX right away. That's what, we're, we're just, we're hopping around doing other work until CSX comes back. So, if we, if we end up starting work and then CSX, like, will be there tomorrow, whatever work we're doing, we'll stop where we're at and we'll jump back over to the railroad to finish up that work. But, once, once Esters drainage is in, then we're hop, we're, we're getting the base course in and tying all that in. That's, that's the plan. That's why we haven't finished that.
Okay. And at the end of Bowen Street, that's between Holly and Keller Street, at the end of Bowen, there's a patch there that's just kind of left undone. Is, is there, I, I was asked that yesterday. What was the issue with it?
There's, there's like, and you probably wouldn't notice because I think we have cones over them. They have like three or four water valves there, and there's a couple of water valves that got damaged, and so, we have to fix them. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's going to be a little bit of an undertaking to fix them. And I, I think we just haven't gotten around to it yet, quite honestly.
Okay. I was, I was asked that question yesterday. Just trying to get an idea of what was the holdup in that area.
That's it.
Because they were like, oh, practical purposes, you almost finished.
I know. It looks like, it's like, why didn't you just do that? You know? I know. But that's what it is. The, the water valves are damaged.
Okay. And you're looking at, by the end of March, maybe having close to Lee Street back, just about with the final coat? Lee Street back?
That, if, if we can, there's like, I guess there's a lot of things in play. We video the lines, then the city has to review the lines, and so, then we have to do a walkthrough. And we're trying to stay ahead of the city, give them time to review the videos. And we're like, basically, it's no different than if you're building a house and you're doing a punch list and, oh, I got a caulk, and, oh, I got a, there's a chip in that wall or whatever. Well, there are certain things we know, like, if there's curbing and for some reason the curb cracked and there's a big crack in the curb, well, we know we need to fix that. So, we're not waiting for the city to tell us to fix that. We're jacking it out, fixing it. So, that's what we're doing, is staying ahead of that in anticipation that the videos will be good, everything will be fine. But our goal, my goal, is by the end of March to have from Oak Street to Lee Street, surface course of asphalt paved. That's my goal. So, I want to make sure I'm very clear. That's the goal. I'm shooting for the moon, you know? So.
Yeah. And of course, the other two areas of concern is north of Division, Fayard Street, that's one. And the other one is, of course, Crusoe Street. Those are the two highest that I hear, hear about.
We're, we're moving into that area right now. So, we're crossing our fingers that there aren't any additional engineering errors. There's, there's some instances where we seem to think that we might end up having to go under the water line. That was, has already been in place, so.
Isn't the sewer already done there?
Mm-hmm. The only thing we have left to do is storm drain.
Wow.
The last little bit, the last sewer was Bone Street and then Forest and Main. Main, Forest. So, all of that, the sewer's been laid.
Okay. And I guess one more question. Between Division Street and Bradford, is that a natural fault? That intake drain?
Yeah, it sheet flows.
It flows? Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's all. Okay. That's all I have to ask. Thanks.
All right.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, we're going to move on to C, council report. George, you want to start it or not?
Yeah, I was just, proposed a couple of questions. PDA by, certainly, turns young opinion on having paid for from the city dealing with Main Street. And they, in Main, when it was 2003, they changed the way the city can do that. So, just want to let you know that's why I suggested that, that they can actually hire people from the city and put them in the back of Main Street so that they can quickly help to redevelop the Main Street. So, we got that clarified. And that's what I asked for about, about having the taxes going back through, collecting these taxes. Can you actually see that in the Main Street and then pay back to the businesses that create the avalanche taxes and sale taxes? How we're going to handle that? And does that leave us to run that back through them? So, it's just another question. I want to make sure we're doing all stuff, we're right, doing a label. So, those, I keep proposing a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mr. Demme. Dr. Tizell?
Yes, I, if the mayor was here, I would commend him on his State of the City address. But, Mr. Leonard, good job on the State of the City address. Also, follow that up with, any idea when we might be driving down Howard Avenue downtown?
I don't see any reason why it shouldn't be in the next couple of weeks. We've already moved the barricade further back so that the people can get into the restaurant, and we're moving it further back still so that people can get around the corner into the hospital.
So, if we do a block a week?
Yep.
Eventually, it'll be open about when? And could we set the ribbon cutting for that date?
That pretty much takes the, I mean, which businesses are being harmed? Maybe is it the empty lot here or the empty lot over there that you own here?
I'm just thinking, we spent, what, what'd we spend? 1.9 million?
For the whole project, which isn't done yet.
Okay, but we can do the downtown. Why not get our, start getting our money's worth?
Okay.
And we do that, you know, maybe set a ribbon cutting in a week or something? It'd be nice. Thank you.
We were really hoping to take Clydesdale and change the route.
Clydesdale's no relation.
Yeah, that would've been a good day for the thing. Another good opportunity would be the Children's Christmas Parade would be a great opportunity to use that part of the road. That's the first Mardi Gras, I mean, Mardi Gras.
Yeah, you're scaring me. See, I know how you politicians are. I call it that Christmas. The Children's Christmas Parade. We, well, you know, you know, we, what's today? January 29th? We could have like a February 1st, cut the ribbon, children's parade in downtown Howard Avenue. Just, that's all. I'm done. Thanks.
Okay. That's it, Dr. Tizell? Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, the only thing I want to kind of speak about is the, the big disappointment on our Houdats, our cousins over there. They, they played a great game and they, they came up short. And there's been a lot of angst since then with all the Saints fans, of course, Biloxi is a, a big area that we, we certainly cheer on our Saints. And Drew Brees penned a little bit of response, and I just wanted to read into our record today a little bit about what he said because it parallels so much about the heart and soul, I believe, of Biloxi too. It, it parallels how we feel about our city and the challenges that we face. And, and this is what he penned. I just got a couple excerpts. "I've spent the last week navigating the heartache and disappointment from the game. Some things within our control and some, some outside our control that caused us to fall short. So much of our motivation is to represent the Houdat Nation with determination and resiliency. We want to play for you. We want to fight for you. We want to win for you. You deserve that. The longer I play, I realize that we are truly one heartbeat with our fans. Our success is your success. Our disappointment is your disappointment. We are inspired by one another to accomplish things far greater than what we could ever do on our own. There is no place like New Orleans. There is no community like ours. No fans like the Houdat Nation. I refuse to let this hold us down. I refuse to let this create any negativity or resentment. I embrace the challenge. So, keep your chin up, hold your head high, puff your chest out. Because we are the Houdat Nation and we will always persevere." What's your statement? Thank you, Mr. President.
Amen. All right. Can you follow that, Mr. Barrett?
As long as Robert doesn't get to talk when I'm finished.
All right.
First of all, we have a ribbon cutting for the library and Woolmarket this Friday at 10:00 AM. And I know for the rest of the city, libraries isn't a really big deal to you because you've had them for a long time, but for us, this library's a big deal. Ours was in a rundown mobile home for many years. And so, this is a, a great, a big thing for our ward and the Woolmarket community. So, I invite everybody to be there for that, 10 o'clock. And they're going to have king cake and stuff, so. I know George will be there to eat. So, that's 10 o'clock. Also, in regard to Howard Avenue, I drove down it the other day and I noticed the, it's marked for the parking already. And I know it's going to be a tight squeeze if you have people going both ways and you have cars on both sides, but there weren't any middle markings in the road. Is that coming or is that just going to be sort of, you get to ride wherever you want to? Or how, how is that going to be navigated? We're not intending to put a middle line down. Okay. That's my, and then in regard to the Saints, you know, just for the record, I won't read a book like Kenny did, but Saints got robbed, just for the record. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I have a few closing comments. I want to thank the city, the mayor, Mike, for the support with the MLK Weekend Celebration, Police Department. You guys did great in leading the grand marshal with the gold shoes down the street. That was me. We had a great celebration. I was kind of in awe with the guest speaker we had. Guest speaker was, was Mr. James Meredith, the first black ever admitted into Ole Miss. A guy who set those milestones. I got a chance to eat lunch with him before the program and actually sit down and do an interview with him during the, during that celebration process. And I mean, it's just amazing what's all in, in his head. So, that was just one of the biggest highlights of my life in that. State of the City, again, it was great. We had a great State of City. I had people tell me that's one of the best ones in five or six years, State of the City. Dr. Tizell, thanks for coming out. We entertained some kids at high school, and I got to watch Dr. Tizell be the superintendent all over again on that. And I got a few comments on the bricks. Had a lot of people tell me about the brick, View Marsh- the brick View Marsh area, how well it looked. And I got fussed at because they painted them and put lines on them for parking spaces. And she jumped all over me for it. But she said it was beautiful. Other than that, that concludes my report. We're going to move on to public agenda, citizen comments. Three minutes per person. Would anyone on my left would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my left? Nobody? Anyone on my right? Nobody? Anyone in the back? No one in the back. Well, I'm going to go ahead and conclude citizen comments. All right, we're going to move on to policy agenda. Ordinance, first reading, Lucy A., please.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for a parcel of land that is currently zoned RM 30, high-density multifamily residential to LB limited business for property identified as 308 Santini.
I'll go ahead and make that motion on that. Second by Mr. Lawrence, that's the first reading. Resolution B.
Resolution to deny a request for a zoning map amendment for a change in zoning for several parcels of land from RS 10 low-density single-family residential to CB community business.
I'll make that motion to deny.
Motion by Dr. Tizell to deny. Need a second. Second by Mr. Lawrence. Any questions, Dr. Tizell?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'd like to read this into the record. The motion was made on the Planning Commission and seconded to deny the applicant, applicants with the caveat, excuse me, deny the applicants with the caveat that the commission doesn't require the two-year waiting period. And when there are final plans for the Pops Ferry Road extension, then the applicant can come back. And basically, the, the commission heard this request by the applicant to rezone. This is Oakmont Place, which is immediately adjacent to the west of the Coliseum. And this neighborhood, this street will be impacted by the Pops Ferry extension. They, it's a little bit premature because really there's, nobody come forth with an offer to purchase their properties, although it is likely to be a good business location at some point. So, typically, you have to wait two years. The recommendation approved by the Planning Commission to us was to deny it, but understand that the applicant doesn't have to wait two years if something pops up and it warrants rezoning the property. Would that be accurate? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Tizell. George, you have any comments on that? Resolution B? None. Anyone else from the council? Mr. Glavine? Mr. Deming?
Yeah, what, Jerry, what is the, what's the process for this? For the applicant?
Well, on this particular project, I believe the reason that the Planning Commission did not approve it is because the, the neighbors that had banded together to seek this request didn't have a project. The Planning Commission looked at it that they felt that, you know, they were getting the zoning changed because they knew that the city was going to be interested in purchasing part of this property for the right of way going through there. And that this just seemed to be an effort to increase the value of the property before they sold it to the city. So, I think had they come in with a project and were seeking the zoning change, the Planning Commission would have looked at it differently. But it was just a zoning change for the sake of being a zoning change. Does that make sense?
It, it does.
Okay.
My concern is that, what are the elements required to meet to approve a zoning change?
Well, it either has to be a public need, a mistake in the original zoning, or a change in the character of the neighborhood. And their argument was that there'd been a change in the character of the neighborhood. That argument could be argued for or against. Nothing right around this property has really changed, other than what Katrina changed several years ago. But they could make an argument that we're so close to the Coliseum, you know, that, that we tend to be living in a commercial zone already. So, the Planning Commission listened to the arguments for and against and voted to deny.
And, and the change in the neighborhood, I don't want to make the argument, I don't, I suspect it could be made, is there's going to be a connector road from the Coliseum property that will bisect Oakmont out to the new Pops Ferry extension, which will leave about four houses on the north end of Oakmont, then the access road, if you will, and then several properties south of the access road. So, until that's, until that's done, I, I mean, if it was my property, I'd make the argument that the character of the neighborhood's changed. I've got an access road for my neighbor and a new Pops Ferry running behind my house.
If, if the road, if the road does in fact locate in this area, the neighbors will have a real strong argument for changing the character of the neighborhood just by the construction of the road.
I just want to make sure that we don't get stuck in a trap where we're denying a zone change because we don't want to cost us more money down the road. Because we think that they're, they're doing this as a strategy to gain money from the city. And the city then is denying it because we want to reduce our exposure in the future. If they did have a project that was coming up or proposed, would the Planning Commission have passed this?
It, it always, it always carries a lot more weight if the, if the applicant has a, a project, a real project coming in. But at this point, we don't know how much of this property's going to be a part of that road extension and how much is not. You know, the process would be, if the council votes to deny this, then at whatever point the decision is made that the road is going to go through here and where it's going to go, then those owners could come back and reapply within that two-year period.
Or some, or somebody may approach them with a project tomorrow for that matter.
That's correct. Yes, sir. That's always possible. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Was there residents speaking out against what they wanted to do?
Well, there were some residents that chose not to be a part of the application. They did that at the ward meeting that was held, held prior to this. Some wanted to be a part of it, some didn't. Some wanted to remain there in their residences.
That'd be accurate.
I have a, I have a question. So, none of this has anything to do with these people wanting to use these properties as short-term rental? They're just doing it to position themselves, to sell the property hypothetically in the future if this connector road does run in the right spot?
That's correct. I don't recall short-term rental being brought up at all during either the ward meeting or the Planning Commission meeting.
No, although I can't, can't resist the opening saying, there might be a couple of short-term rentals operating there that we don't know about.
But if they're, if this is rezoned to commercial business, they could use it as short-term rental then?
They could right now. We're going to be coming back to y'all in, in a little later when we get into the short-term rental case that's next. Unless you want me to go into it right now, we're going to be coming back to y'all with a recommendation that's going to be going to the Planning Commission that we believe all short-term rentals need to be conditional use regardless of what zone they're in. In other words, it still would not be allowed in single family.
So, everyone would have to come and get a permit and be approved through the council regardless of it's commercial business or not?
That's correct. And, and the logic behind that is, is that if we change the zoning on an entire apartment complex or condominium complex to CB, we still would not know who was operating in there. And there, there'd be no initiative to come and seek a, a license. So, we believe that the best way to regulate it is to make sure that everybody either has or doesn't have a, a conditional use permit.
While, while you're discussing this topic on the Planning Commission, might, might you all also consider maybe do a little research, somebody to see what sort of fines might be imposed for those that operate without a permit?
Yes, sir.
Just saying. And maybe per each occurrence, each occurrence being an individual day?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question, Jerry, on, on this subject. How many people have you fined that have been doing this illegally?
We have some people in court. We haven't fined any, or the court hasn't fined anybody yet. You know, we take these cases to community court. And again, we had cases that were there when the council called for the public hearing for the Planning Commission to, to reconsider short-term rental in single-family zoning. So, those were put on hold. Those people were made aware that you can rent for more than 30 days, but not for less than 30 days. We have not received any, any complaints on any of those, that they were continuing to do short-term rental. But those are in the court, several are in the court right now.
Now, you know, these people are breaking law. We don't need to change laws because somebody's breaking them to make everything right for them, you know?
Yes, sir.
Because most of them are not really interested in the city of Biloxi. They had to make money.
Now, I will say that the majority of those that were in court were people that are operating in single-family zone districts. So...
That's why I talked to PDA about it, tell them to look at the fine. Fine's not enough, $25. Need to look at the right thing we have to do. He said he's going to look into that.
We have, we've discussed that. We've talked about it. And again, we, we do want to, to make it more effective. We do want to put in place, there are sections in the Land Development Ordinance and in the Code of Ordinances that state that it's not just a one-time fine, that for every day that they continue to operate, that's considered a separate offense and would be charged another penalty for each day until they, they cease.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for the question. All in favor who did not this resolution, raise your hand. Okay, one, two, three, four, five. And anyone opposed? You abstain? Two abstains? Or one abstain? Two. Mr. Deming and Ms. Newman abstain. Everyone else vote to deny. Five, two. Resolution carries. Resolution C?
Resolution to deny a conditional use approval request to authorize establishment of short-term rentals within an existing apartment complex identified as 1880 Southern Avenue.
I recommend by Planning Commission to deny.
I'll second it.
Motion by, um...
Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tizell. Any, any questions, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, I just read the write-up. And I mean, they use a condition to use A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I. That's enough for me. They decided to deny. I'll go along with that.
Okay, Dr. Tizell, any questions?
I can't add anything to what Dr. Lawrence said.
Dr. Lawrence. Okay. Um, yeah, go, go ahead, go ahead. Ms. Deming?
Um, Jerry, this is, the person that brought this is the owner of the apartment complex?
Yes.
And the, this is an apartment complex where no tenant has any ownership rights. This is just the owner's property. This is surrounded by tracks, railroad tracks on the north, an RV park, I think, on the right, or on the east, and a hotel on the south of this complex. I, I'm just honest, if there were anywhere that was appropriate for short-term rentals, I can't imagine how this wouldn't be.
Let me, let me put something on the overhead that'll help explain part of this.
I have a quick question. Was this, was this certain complexes, not the whole complex?
No, this, well, we ultimately believe that there are going to be a lot more units that, where there's going to be requests to ask for short-term rental here. This is just four. And I would think that if these go through, you'll, you'll probably see some more. But one of the, one of the reasons that I believe that this failed, if, if you look at the map that I've got up here, this is the property that we're talking about. This is the one where the application was made. All of this property next door is zoned CB. So, under normal circumstances, the extension of an existing zone district is usually a good argument for approving a zoning change. One of the problems here, though, is that if you look at Greater Avenue, the, the access into this apartment complex, you've got full frontage here with Southern Avenue up to this point. So, you have access for a fire truck or an emergency vehicle to get in on this side. But if you look on the north end, the right of way ends at the corner of the property. So, they're literally having to cross someone else's property to get into there. They did not have the two ways in or out that are required. Even though they're using this, this property owner could always put up a fence there and shut it off. So, they don't have two actual accesses to get into and out of the property. And I believe that that was part of the reason that the Planning Commission felt this was, was not a valid request.
Doesn't that property belong to the city of Biloxi?
I, I believe it does. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought. I've been back there a couple of times. Now, I, I've talked with the owner, well, a manager, I guess, at that time. They're only talking about doing a couple of apartments versus doing the whole property. And I think that was one of the arguments that, that I had with them, is that if you did one or two in an apartment complex, to me, that's not, not good.
Well, what we went through with, with Oak Shores, for example, and, and even with, with Cypress Cove, we had a, a few applications that came in where they were actually requesting short-term rental. But when we had the hearing, the room was full of people that owned other units. Where when the question was asked, how many people in here are operating short-term rental? And the majority of the owners there raised their hand. So, I, I would think the same thing would apply here, that if this, if this does go through, then we're going to have other applications. And again, I'd go back to the argument that I made before. We're, we're going to be coming back. And I, I believe, we had a, a meeting with the Planning Commission, with six of the Planning Commission members last Friday to discuss this. And, and, and just trying to come up with a way to regulate it. How do we know who's operating and who's not? One way I believe that, that carries a, a lot of weight would be to make sure that everybody in the city of Biloxi that's operating short-term rental is required to get a conditional use permit and go through the process.
Absolutely.
For that reason, if we have to have a code officer go out there, we know before he even leaves the office, he can check the registry of the approved permits and can tell whether or not that unit, that particular unit or that particular complex actually has a license or not.
Right. I was thinking to put it on the whole complex and more, more or less put it on, because you have people now that are renting the apartments and then using it as a short-term rental to make extra money off of it.
Yes, sir.
So, if you put it on the owner of the property, then we'll, it'll be a one-stop-shop where we can go and, and put the weight on him. And we'll have somebody to get it.
That's another one of the recommendations that we're going to be coming to the Planning Commission with during this next public hearing, is that any applications that come in have to be done through the owner's name, not through the individual unit owner's name. The, the property owner, whoever owns the land is ultimately the one that's going to bear any responsibility for, for any penalties that the court imply, or that the council would, would imply. So, and with any code enforcement case, we always go after the property owner because that's where we assess charges to the taxes.
Right. And it should be in their names and, and my.
Jerry, do we have any more conditional uses coming from the Planning Commission on RM 20, RM 30s related to short-term rentals? Are there any in process? Or do you have any applica, applications that will be going to the Planning Commission?
We don't have, I don't believe we have any more conditional uses coming to you. But we are going to have the, the zoning change application that's going to be coming for Oak Shores to go to CB. But we would, we would ask y'all, even though that was approved by the Planning Commission during the meeting Friday when we talked with the Planning Commission members, they were hoping the council would hold that up until after the public hearing to see if the, the recommendation is going to carry with, we only met with six members. And we want to see if that recommendation that everybody have a conditional use, that the rest of the Planning Commission will agree with that is one of the recommendations to bring back to the council.
Any idea how many RM 20, RM 30 apartment complexes there are in the city that could flip or go to short-term rentals condos for that matter?
I don't have a number right off the bat. But my guess would be is that if, if we start issuing conditional uses for apartment complexes, we're going to see a lot more, especially a lot of those that are probably in a state of disrepair, that they would see this as an opportunity to generate some more revenue to improve the condition. And I, I would expect that we'd get a lot of applications from different complexes.
I'm done. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any more, what, Mr. Glavine?
Uh, Jerry, you mentioned the, on the back-
Uh, Jerry, you mentioned the, uh, on the back end of that property that it joins to a residential, uh, property, and that's the ingress egress for a fire truck to get in and out.
Yes, sir.
Has there been any attempt by the owners of this, uh, property to acquire that? Has there been any dialogue, uh, or any resistance?
Well, no, actually, uh, the representative that was there representing the apartment complex seemed somewhat surprised because there is concrete here that they've put there to go from this road to here. The problem that we have is that they don't have the legal right to cross that property.
But they could obtain it from the property owner if he decided, or she decided to sell a portion of that, correct?
Well, we believe that this is, we believe this is owned by the city. This property here is owned by the city, so they would have to approach the administration.
But it would have to be rezoned, that piece, that sliver?
Not for an access, no. They would, they would not have to have it rezoned for that, but they would certainly have to have...
So is that the only reason the planning, uh, planning commission denied it, is primary, or the primary reason?
I, I think that was, that was one of the reasons, I think another reason was is because the, uh, uh, they understood that these are rented properties. You know, you got a different situation than you've got with the condos that we've heard before. These are rented properties where those are owner, uh, investor-owned or owner-owned units. And, uh, I don't believe the planning commission felt comfortable with that.
All right, so in your opinion, if that was part of this parcel and not the city's, would that have had any weight or bearing on this, uh, denial?
Well, it would, it would remove one of the, the concerns that the planning commission had. Wh- whether it would have made the vote go a different way, I just, I don't know.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Let's call for the question. Okay, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and ca- uh, any other questions? Okay, call for a question, all in favor to deny this resolution? Okay, one, two, three, four, that's four, and against? Okay, three, Mr. Barrett, um, Mr. Demming and Ms. Newman. And these two are den- den- uh, oppose.
Uh, Mr. Creo, do you know when the planning commission will conduct that public hearing? Have y'all set a date on that yet? Okay, that's good.
We will.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Can I need a motion on consent agenda?
So moved.
Over by Dr. Tisdale, second by... Mr. Barrett. Questions, George?
Yeah, I need a, that's a question about the resolution L. I was reading this thing where this, uh, we moving this money around. We got a special section or whatever you call this. Where does this money come from, this pickleball people?
Yes, fifteen hundred, um, I got, I received probably about three weeks ago. A thousand came from SMPDD for pickleball, and five hundred was raised by the pickleball community. So that's going into one account in hopes of buying some benches and canopies.
What, what is this special account, what is that? Who created a special account? For what reason? So they created this money, we're accepting it, and you're gonna do what with it?
This is money that's been donated. The other money's, the, um, approximately eight thousand was the money's raised from the guns and hoses. So half of it went to buy the bikes for, um, fire department, and the other half is going to the Mississippi Special Olympics. And that's the only way we can work it out to get the money back to them, was to create that special account, right?
So what the fifteen hundred for, there's another, you had four thousand, three thousand, fifty...
They got, they, pickleball got it donated, so, and they wanna use it for, um, benches and canopies. And they don't have an account, they're not a nonprofit organization, so they go through us and we purchase it with the monies they get.
I know they requested some benches, how are we gonna handle that? They gotta raise the money for benches, or the city's gonna have to do that?
Well, I'm hoping, Connie put in for forty-five hundred dollars at, um, the meeting on Monday. So I'm hoping that gets passed and we'll have enough to do the benches.
Uh, the, the pickleball king is here, and he said he got five hundred people out there playing, that's pretty awesome.
It's, we have BA, we got veterans playing too now.
You know, it's great that they raised this money for us, uh, we need to do something for them. Need to add lights, benching, we need to do something.
Right, that's what we're working on.
I know, I know, uh, Tight One, uh, Leonard, he don't like to spend any money. But if you can't go around any people who give us money, then we don't do anything for them.
No, they...
But this is something we need to step up to the plate.
Yeah, these are things we're working on, writing and things like that.
So I'll just try and be, I don't like the special account thing, because, you know, when you read these things here, which I'll actually do it, you'd never get that out of this resolution. How good this is really, what they did. Read this resolution, you never picked that up like that. It's like they donated the money to the police department for special need, I mean, that's, that's pretty awesome. You need to do a little better job of writing this, whoever wrote this, they do a little better job, really. I mean, they done a great, they, anybody come in and get that much money to the city, they don't ask anything back? I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty special, you know? So that's a good thing that they done. Thank you. The next, the next, excuse me, the next one, Tom, be out.
Have Robert say you wanna come in?
Oh, I'll do it, all right.
Yeah, it was just, it's really about pickleball. Um, I've had, I've had a couple people call me to play, and I know that the king is here, and his highness's number's on the wall there, and I've had a couple people call me. Is there any way... Is there any way that we can, um, give somebody else the number to the code to get in? Maybe the Donald Snyder Building, I know Dan Hunter called you, I think Jennifer Powers called me, and I gave her your number as well to get the code to play pickleball.
Someone, they've called our office, and we've been giving them the code, because they just, you know, that's how we've been working it. So we may change the number on there, and if they call, we try to, we do that to keep those kids from being...
Oh, look, I know, and actually, the, the people that called me frustrated because they couldn't get him to play pickleball, they understood that whole logic, and, and, and the theory is, is well-founded. But I just wanna make sure that it's easily accessible to those that wanna play for valid purposes.
It's one, two, three, four, you know that, okay.
Zero, 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 zero.
And to follow up on that, Tom Linnenberger is the pickleball king.
The king.
And, um, they did a good job raising this, and I know some of the council members participated in that. And, uh, it's just terrific, I can't remember time, there may be one in the past that, that I don't recall, but we don't have people like George said coming forward saying, hey, we wanna, we wanna give this money to the city, and then it can be reallocated to support more pickleball activities. Right, anyway, it just, right. Anyway, hats off to the pickleball folks, and like I said, I appreciate Mr. Lawrence's comment as well, thank you, Tom, that's it.
Okay.
Can I, can we, now, Tom?
Go ahead.
Your highness, if you wanted to say something?
Tom, and you do have a lot of religious groups because they drink a hell of a lot of wine at the White House, so, but anyway.
You like that, no kidding?
I like it.
That's commu- that's communion.
Are we gonna have an unwind Wendy's tomorrow? Oh, I like... Got an unwind Wednesday.
Okay, anything else, George? Okay.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a clarification on all these softwares. There's so many different softwares on here, and the particular reason we have that many, Mike, at one time? We put them all together, trying to get them all straight, maybe you can, uh, explain that to us, please.
Simple, the simple fact is that in prior fiscal years, the software money was scattered all through the budget in different departments and in different line items. The council approved a budget amendment we did during the budget preparation, where we moved what we thought was as much of the IT money all, all out of the departments and into the administrative department, where anything that had to be bought on, that was software-related, would go through the IT department and get a check, you know, get checked, is that something we need? Is it something that we're already paying for? Is it a duplication, et cetera, et cetera? That's Nikki Philippich's office, and then would come to the council for approval. So that was the process we set up. What we have learned as we moved through the budget year is that the money that we moved out of the individual department IT buckets into the administrative bucket, to use those terms, was not, did not include all of the IT expenditures in previous years. And now, now, you'll see a budget amendment probably at the next meeting that moves the remainder of the IT money out of the departments and into the IT bucket, so that we have enough for the year. So we're, we're almost there, what we will know now, when we begin the fiscal year twenty budget, we'll know exactly how much IT money is needed in the budget. We, we really didn't know that in, in prior years because the way it was scattered all through the, the departments. So that's what, we're going through that process, you'll see one more iteration where we come back to you with a budget amendment sometime at the end of this month, early next month, um, end of this, sometime in February, we'll, we'll have a budget amendment that, that moves some remaining IT money from departments into the administrative department.
So we gonna put everything together and be total controlled by one department?
Yeah.
That's what, that's what you're trying to do.
At the end of the day, we're trying to manage the IT requirement for the city to be sure that we're not duplicating software in one department that's, you know, also needed in another department, that we're not buying software that we don't need, uh, that we're getting a good deal with software companies. In some cases, we've negotiated, uh, different rates and, and amounts. So we're just trying to shed a light, a little bit more light on this IT thing, because it, at the end of the day, it probably adds up to a year about eight hundred thousand, about eight hundred thousand dollars a year that the city's spending on software. And it, it, I don't think we ever knew that before, we know it now.
I, I think that'd be a good thing, to have, you have good control over it, you know? And like you said, you can bet it all out, man, you get a way better price too, I don't, I don't know exactly how that works when y'all do that. But I just think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Mr. Glavine? Mr. Demming?
Can you tell me about, A, I've just, it's, uh, a commission to protect local military bases and to authorize an expenditure of three thousand dollars? So, um, what's the three thousand dollars going towards? I can't imagine three thousand dollars actually protecting a military base.
Neither can I, fortunately, it's a, it's, it's a one contribution from this city, on, every other city on the, on the coast contributes, as, as do the counties contribute, uh, to this fund, which the Harrison County Development, ACDC, uses to do studies and research and so forth to try and prepare for base realignment and closure challenges. It's just our fair share that we've been asked for, and we, we did it last year, probably did it the year before that. And this is money that goes into a, a, a fund at the Harrison County Development Commission, and they, that's what they use for their lobbyists and their studies and so forth and so on. To get right down to it, the money we're spending on the Kessler Gate is our best protection.
Yeah, Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, this, this is just on, on item V, that's the, uh, Microsoft software. I just wanna note that it appears at the fifth whereas, that, that appears to be a Scrivener's error. It says for a period of one year, probably a copy and paste thing. Uh, the third line says, "Software for a period of one year beginning October first, two thousand seventeen." I'm assuming that needs to be two thousand nineteen. Okay, no, 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 that's fine, just, thank you, that's all.
Yeah, that's our one-year Microsoft bill.
Mr. Glavine, I miss you. Good, and I also have nothing. Okay, I guess with that being said, call for a question, all in favor of the consent agenda? Six-zero, note that Mr. Barrett is out. Gonna move on to code enforcement hearings? Mr. Creo?
Item A on the agenda, Margaret Galloway Estate, four-twenty-one Benaki Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item B on the agenda, Envy Lee and Thou On T. Don, uh, this is on Bayview Avenue and is still in violation.
Is there anyone to speak on the Bayview Avenue? Anyone here to speak on Bayview Avenue? Consider that matter closed.
Let me ask you a question, Jerry.
Yes, sir.
I know that the pier's in bad shape, what about the people that just have pollens out there?
The people that what?
Just have pollens, nothing on it.
Pollens?
Just the pollens.
Well, unless it's an unsafe structure, uh, there's really not a reason for us to go after it. The reason, the reason that we have, there's always been a question about whether or not we have jurisdiction over the water. And so I had Michael Collins do an opinion on that a few years ago, and the, the answer is, the opinion is, is that anytime there's something over the water that poses a threat to, uh, to our property, like in this case, the, the structure here where the, the ten is peeled back, if we had a storm and that blew over and could jeopardize a house on the south side of, uh, Bayview, then we have what's called police jurisdiction over that. Uh, pilings in the water really don't, uh, constitute a, from a structural standpoint constitute a, an unsafe structure, a damaged structure. So I don't know that we'd have jurisdiction over that.
Well, that's something you probably ought to check into, because everybody's ugly looking with that pier. Just a bunch of pollens, they're leaning over. So if we go after this here, it'll look like y'all better do something.
Yes, sir, that's the reason, that's the reason we're addressing this, you've got structural, this is structurally unsound, and, and the roofing and the missing pier, the, uh, missing deck boards and everything else. So we do have the right to, uh, to go after this one. Item C on the agenda is Linda Roth Ralph, it's two forty-nine Coon Street, and this property is still in violation.
Is there one here to speak on Linda A. Roth Ralph? Anyone here to speak on Ms. Linda A. Roth Ralph? We consider that matter closed.
Item D on the agenda, Jerry M. Smith, Jr., care of Jared Smith. Uh, this is located at one-two-two eight-eight Parker's Creek Road. This property is still in violation, I believe Mr. Smith is in the audience. He has started working on it to demolish the structure. And is asking for some additional time, yes, sir.
Would you need thirty days or more?
Where, where exactly is this on Parker's Creek?
Where the structure's at?
This is, uh, you know, this is in the rear of a, a structure that's there. It's actually, actually, you turn off of Parker's Creek Road, there's an unnumbered... It's actually, actually you turn off of Parker's Creek Road, there's an unnumbered alley that goes back to this property. So it's, it's east of where Shriner's Boulevard and Parker's Creek run together. It's two lots over, and I can show you the map if you wanna see it.
Yeah, I recommend giving him a sixty-day extension.
We have no objection.
Okay, got a motion by, so you, Mr. Barrett?
Second.
Second by, uh, Mr. Glavine. All in favor? Seven, zero, motion carried.
Item E on the agenda, Jessica Stewart, three ninety Clay Street. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on Ms. Jessica Stewart? On behalf of Ms. Jessica Stewart, we consider that matter closed.
Item F is the property next door, which is three ninety-two Clay Street, also Jessica Stewart, and it's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Ms. Jessica Stewart? Anyone here to speak on behalf of Ms. Jessica Stewart? We consider that matter closed. Gonna move on to the routine agenda? Routine agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence. Uh, George, you have any questions on the routine agenda?
Yeah, we're gonna see how much money we received. Yeah, y'all? Big money? You received all that already?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, that's good then.
Any other questions on routine agenda? Okay, none? Okay, call for the question, all in favor? Okay, seven, zero, motion carry. Um, Mr. Barrett, you got a question for the administration?
Yeah, I, um, about two months ago, we requested a report from Nexite, and to this date, we haven't got one, and we vote on this stuff in good faith. Um, and I believe that we should be afforded the opportunity to see the results, and I know it's not coming from you guys, but, um, you know, we've asked for it multiple times, and nothing. And so if we don't have a report from the powers that be within the next two weeks, I'm gonna make an emotion, a motion to terminate that contract. If we vote on this, we should know what's going on. And, and the guy, when he was sitting here, said that if we had to go to executive session or whatever to let us know names, we don't even have to know names, but there's someone in the administration that's receiving a report every however often. That report should be forwarded to us, in my opinion. And so I would like to see a report within the next two weeks, as well as, um, you know, some progress. And I talked to Keith when I was in Jackson a couple of weeks ago, but we're paying these guys pretty big money, and we don't know what's going on. And, and I'm not saying that there isn't anything going on, but we should be made aware of the progress that's taking place, if there is any progress. So I'd like to see a report from both of those in the, in the next couple of weeks on, you know, some possible funding that we're getting. And I know Keith's working on the Kessler Gate and things like that, but just so that we can have something in front of us to see progress on what these guys are being paid for.
I'll have a Nexite, um, I'll add Nexite to the agenda for next, uh, Tuesday night.
I have a question on that. What did it take to terminate that contract? That's eighty-four thousand dollars you just threw in the street. What would you have to do to terminate it, Peter? I think, like, like, yeah, we, we not asked the same question about four, five times, they don't come, they don't give you a report, they don't do nothing. They're wasting money, you know?
I'm not recommending that we terminate the contract, because I believe it's a good service if they perform what they say and bring us, I mean, one business coming into town that they bring is worth the price that we're paying, if they bring them. But I would just like to see what progress is being made. I mean, if someone's receiving a report, there's no reason that that report can't be forwarded to us.
I'd like to answer on the termination of contract too, please.
Alright. Go ahead, anything else on the council?
No, I'm just, I'd like to make a comment when we get ready to adjourn.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Uh, George, George gonna make the, the closing co- uh, motion, but go ahead.
You gonna make the motion to recess?
I'm gonna close it. He wanted to close it in somebody's name, so.
I do, I do too, I have a recommendation. I don't know who you have in mind, but go ahead, George.
I'm gonna close it, I'm, Ali Abair, a lot of y'all probably knew him. He's, uh, David Leckage's father-in-law. You know, been around Bucks a long time. He's a LSU eight-up fan, he's the first fan, I've been known to him about sixty, seventy years before he died. I've never, that's the first athlete, I guess what you call, fan, that was a true fan. Everybody talks, they put forward, they put forward, say, this guy was eight-up with LSU. When I first met him, I said, I mean, you can't, how you get that excited? Well, you're from Gaydon, Louisiana, you get excited about LSU, you know? That's where you were born and raised, but he played a lot of sports, did a lot with the VA, did a lot of coaching in, uh, the city. So I just think we oughta close the meeting, I'm, Ali Abair. How about French is that? Ali Abair.
Moved by, uh, Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Glavine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, I'd also like to add, uh, a coast musician we just lost, Johnny Hosey. Uh, Hosee and Brown, Johnny, he learned how to play the guitar by ear and was, was such a magnificent guitar player. But even beyond that, he participated in numerous charities, golf events, volunteered his time, and I, I can't even put an amount to, uh, what he, he raised, uh, for different charities and, and the needy and, and all of that, so. And it wasn't just Biloxi, he, he covered from coast to coast. His residence was in Bay St. Louis, uh, but I'd like to add Johnny, Johnny Hosey to the mix.
Alright, we got two, two moves, and a second by Ms. Newman. Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor? Seven, zero.